I would like to welcome all of you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education. It is Monday, November 18th. Please rise and join me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To a republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, can you please call the roll?
Reverend Matthias?
Present.
Pastor Moody?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor? Oh, Dr. Randles. Mr. Ross, present. Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
President Faul.
Present.
We have a point with seven.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So move.
So move.
Support? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Celebrations. Do we have any celebrations tonight?
We do not have anything tonight for celebrations.
And what's the update on our student rep?
We had, Dr. Baker has a young man who's going to join us in November.
December.
I'm so sorry.
That's great. All right.
Good to know.
It's nice to know that younger people also forget.
Nice to know I'm considered a younger person.
Maybe we should be working on next year's student rep.
Do we, Mr.?
But with that, Pastor Moody has something he'd like to ask about that.
Is it possible that we can get someone before December? Because I've been working on a couple of students who are interested, and I'd like to bring them to your attention if possible.
Absolutely.
Get together with our vice president.
Yes.
That would be wonderful.
Vice president, I'd like to talk with you, but perhaps maybe we can get somebody or two individuals started before December.
Right.
Actually, our next meeting is December.
Good.
Yeah, it is. December isn't the next month.
I think it's okay to have rotating them. That'd be good.
Okay, that'd be good.
Very good. Mr. Ross, do we have public comment for agenda items?
We do not.
Thank you. On to report. Secretary's report.
Just a couple of items. Reminded about the School Choice Expo, which is this week, November 21st. Located, it's going to be at City High Middle, 1720 Plainfield, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Again, that's an opportunity to meet staff and learn more about the GRPS theme schools and Centers of Innovation. Applications are now available for the 14, 15 school year. Again, that's the School Choice Expo on the 21st at City High Middle, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Also of note, the administration building is supporting the Salvation Army Angel Tree Campaign, collecting toys and gift card donations here in this building. Please ask the folks to take a tag from a decorated tree in the lobby and return an unwrapped item to the same place here at Franklin Campus. And the donations will be accepted until this Wednesday, the 18th, at, excuse me, next month, December 18th, at 1:00 p.m. So they can be delivered to Salvation Army for distribution. Any questions, can contact the superintendent's office, Julie Anderson in there, at 819-2193. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Our superintendent's report.
I would like to ask Kirk Johnson. Do you come forward, please?
Thank you.
Mike, up here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, Superintendent Neal, and our other distinguished board members, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening to give you a few updates on a special event coming up. So I'd like to share that with you. You know, last year, we celebrated the 20th anniversary of our Thanksgiving Day run. And it's been an event that we have been growing over the past several years, and we've outgrown the campus of Calvin College and Cornerstone College. And so for the special anniversary, we moved it to the streets of downtown Grand Rapids. And we had a great time there. We thought it was a really good success. So we're here in the 21st year of the event, and we're here to kick that off. And we're preparing for that coming up on November, Thursday, November 28th, of course. Last year, we had thoroughly enjoyed and experienced over 2,000 participants in that event. And this year, we're looking to do the same or even more. All of our promos are out, our billboards, our radio ads are going on the air, and we're doing some interviews on television as well, and even word of mouth, to get the word out about this year's Thanksgiving Day run. Last year around this time, registration, pre-registration was about 260 registrations. And to date, as we checked before I came down to the meeting, we had over 1,200. So we're way ahead in terms of registration in terms there. So we're looking forward to having a lot of fun there. A couple of things. The race, the course is basically the same as last year, with a couple of fine tuning adjustments for some congestion around the fish ladder. So some of you racers probably know where that party is there around the fish ladder.
There weren't that many people by me.
You were way ahead. He was.
There is a runner in the mist here. There is a runner in the mist. The finish line will be inside again. You know, we looked at our surveys from last year, and some of the runners wanted to hear the theme from Rocky. So we're going to play the theme from Rocky as people are coming into the stadium for their finish. This year's course will be certified. And certification of the distance will allow those who are, you know, runner aficionados to use this time to qualify for other races, so it'll be a certified race there. We also have stage starting, so we're going to separate the advanced runners from the intermediate runners to the beginner runners, the walkers, and the strollers, and the crawlers, you know.
I'm a crawler.
Yeah. However, there is a place for you all depending on your skill level, so don't be afraid about that. We got the high-tech t-shirt. That seemed to be really popular on the last year's evaluation. So we have that high-tech t-shirt, that kind of dry-fit t-shirt, coming back again. This year, we have the Mini Kids Trot Again. It's being sponsored by New Balance. They've come aboard to sponsor the Mini Trot. We're very excited about that. And their finish line this year will be in the arena. So they're going to get a chance to run in the big house and across the finish line there as well, to the theme of Rocky there as well. New Balance has provided a finisher's prize for every student who finishes, so that'll be nice to have there, and they can start collecting those. It's our mascot with a backward baseball cap on and some big running shoes on there. So all of our students will get that as well. The runners and spectators, the family members, will be able to park in all of the downtown Grand Rapids city-owned parking lots free of charge. That's not the Ellis parking lots, the Grand Rapids lot. So they'll be free of charge for that event there. We're still accepting applications, I mean, excuse me, registrations for the race. You can go online, find us at grps.org, Back Class Athletics. We're still looking for volunteers. If someone is interested in volunteering the event, they can also contact us at our email address, which is athletics@g-rps, excuse me, grps.org. The method of payment is cash, checks. We're not, we're looking into a system to accept credit cards, but we're not there yet. The race day registration price is $25. The day of the race is $30 there. We have pre-registration packet pickups, excuse me, packet pickups at Union High School. See my voice fading out. Union High School on November 27th, which is Wednesday, from noon until 6:00 p.m. over at Union High School. So if you're pre-registered, you can go over there and pick up all of your stuff, so that on race morning, you're just ready to go to the starting line there. Let's see some other details there. We want to, we have our honorary and official starter for this year will be none other than our own Dr. Tony Baker. Give him a round of applause. He is currently a record holder in his division.
Is that over 85 or what? It's one of the other 25 age groups. Senior.
He's going to be with us, and he'll get a chance to say some encouraging words to all of the runners and before he gives the racing commands and starts the race. We also have none other than our very own special Ms. Maureen Slade, who will be singing the National Anthem for us.
That would be great. I can practice.
Gotcha.
I'll be ready. I'll be ready.
What a reason to come out on a Thursday. Thursday is Mo and I.
That was a good one.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Give her the gun, I'll sing.
Just wait till I show up and do that.
You'll get those runners right out of there.
That's correct. They'll be gone before you know it.
But one of our school choirs will be performing the National Anthem. We're anticipating that. If not, that we will have another mechanism for the National Anthem. But we would like to take a moment to thank this year's sponsors, which is New Balance, Montague Designs, who's designed all the, you may have had a card in front of you, and our posters, and our shirts and whatnot. Montague Design has been on board with us with that. Fifth Third Bank is one of our partners. Gordon Foods Services, so all of the runner snacks that you will partake in at the end of the race comes from Gordon Foods, and our partnership with the city of Grand Rapids. So we're looking to have a great, great time there this year, you know, and really take the event to another level. We want to continue to grow it, you know, and we think there's room to, for it to get even bigger. So we're just hoping that you all come out and hope for good weather. You know, the long-range forecast is for 47 to 49, mostly sunny. We just hope that holds. And if that does, we're always, you know, having like four, maybe 500 onsite registrations there that morning. Any questions about the Thanksgiving Day run?
I do. I have a question. I need to know what time, because I have to do a turkey. So I've got a noon dinner, so I'll have to be early.
Yeah, okay.
On your car.
You need to be prepared to do the National Anthem at 7:55. Race kicks off at 8:00 a.m., all right?
Appreciate it. My family thanks you.
You got the logo here. Use your feet before you eat.
Right. Move your feet before you eat.
Very good. That'll work.
And you know, one of the things that we're really thankful of is our superintendent has been really supportive in all of our initiatives in terms of health and wellness, and getting the community and the students active and moving. You know, it's a fun-filled event. The residual benefit is that it supports athletics to help us offset some of the costs that we incur in athletics. But really, if we can get an entire community to observe the importance of being healthy, being moving, and getting some activity, we want to really, like I said, make it a broad-based community to support and not just an athletic event. And so she's had really stepped forward and allowed us to carry that message around, being healthy and active and fit for life. So we really appreciate that.
Ms. Slade, can you tell us a few of those, what sort of duties the volunteers will be doing? I know a group of students that may be interested.
Yeah, there's a myriad of roles, from some of the course setup, you know, some of the markers that go on the courses, to some of the crowd movement, the t-shirt check-in, registration check-in, our stage, set up our cones, our snack venue, you know, so people get water in, get out, and get those sort of things. So it's a lot. We have a list of things, and if they email us, we can email a list of those roles, and they can kind of, and there's a job description that goes along with the role. And if they're interested in doing those things, we can connect them there.
Okay. And also, if the choir does fall through, there's a songstress in GRPS, and I believe she sung Happy Birthday to Mo last year here.
Yeah.
We would, um, sure she would be.
Then I'll let her do the official.
Nice.
She was very good.
Nice of you to give her the singing.
She was very good. Have her do it.
Okay, we'll have her do it, okay.
She was really very good.
We'll check with our, find our supervisor, Mrs. Malone, to make that connection there for that.
That'd be great. Do a great job.
So am I hearing that Mo is not going to sing? But the registration, it's for the kids.
All right, I'll be there too.
Back up. Back up.
Might be able to persuade her to give up an ARB selection.
Yeah, maybe I could at the end.
If I may also just quickly mention that we have kicked off our Heart of West Michigan United Way campaign for this year. We're encouraging our entire district to get involved with the Tis the Season for Caring and Cheering. And we know United Way comes to us as a very supportive partner, and they support many of the programs and services that our students, our families, and our communities share and benefit from. And so the more that we can support them, the more they can support us. So we're going to, we've launched our campaign. Information is out, and so we're encouraging not only just our staff members, but our parents and our community partners to join in with us on this campaign. So if you receive any information about the campaign for this year, we're just encouraging everybody to be a part of it. And our message is that a little goes a long way. You know, we're asking for each employee group, role group, to give them a minimum contribution, which is very minimal. And, you know, looking at it over a 26 pay period, it really amounts to less than a dollar per pay period. And so, but that less, the 50 cents, the 70 cents, the 30 cents, combined in total, it does an enormous good for the entire organization and our, like I said, our effort towards supporting United Way. So the more they can do for us, the more they can in turn do for our families and our students. So, thank you. Thank you.
All right, okay. Committee chair update. Dr. Baker?
Yes, we had the November Academic Achievement Committee meeting last week, where we discussed the second, and completed the list of priority schools that we had the plans for. It's the requirement that that is presented to the board, and we will have future reports later on. How many times a year, Carolyn, is that?
Three to four times.
Three to four times. So we will have, we have fairly lengthy discussions of the plans for the priority schools we discussed last week, which was Dickinson, King Leadership, Ottawa Hills, Westwood, and Union, and also Coit, which is a focus school, which focuses on closing the achievement gap. So we had those plans. Those plans are all, I think, it's interesting for the ones this month and also last month, and their distinctiveness to each other, that they are really building specific. And I think it's really important that people, the ones from last week are not up on the website yet. Hopefully, they'll be soon. And I think it's important to kind of see the distinctiveness, and it will give us, so it really shows input from the individual schools, so. And then next month, we will have a meeting, and we'll probably return to looking at some academic measures and attendants, so.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? I noticed in the newspaper, they were talking about the Schools of Hope and Sherwood in particular, it was sort of a low involvement and low enrollment in regards, I don't, if you guys are going to sort of look at that in terms of the School of Hope and the family involvement, student involvement, how to boost participation, and, and, it sounds like a really fantastic program, tutoring and that sort of thing, so I just.
Yeah, I don't know if we discussed exactly the role of parent engagement in, at Sherwood, but, so.
Not specifically at Sherwood, but we can definitely take a look at Sherwood. Not real Sherwood.
Parent engagement did seem to be a theme in many of the programs.
The tutoring, there was some tutoring available to students, and sounded like not a lot of necessarily participation. Of course, that was the newspaper's take on it, so. Bringing it up.
Thanks.
Any further questions for the committee or Dr. Baker? Thank you. Next on the agenda is our purchasing agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of that?
So move.
Support? Any discussion, questions? None? Could you please call the vote?
Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor, our president. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Sorry, are we voting on purchases already?
Yes. Purchases.
Do we get straight past discussion?
Yeah.
Sorry. Can I, well, all right.
That's fine. Yes.
President Faul?
Yes.
Person then passes eight zero.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next on the agenda is approval of our consent agenda grouping. Do I have a motion for approval?
I need to make a motion to approve it, but pull out the Cherry Street item. I feel like I shouldn't vote on a Cherry Street aspect of it.
Do I have support for Dr. Randles' motion?
Support.
Can you please call the vote on that?
Uh, Mr. Ross, yes. Mr. O'Connor, our president. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. LaGranne?
Yes.
Yes.
President Faul?
Yes.
Oh, and I guess actually, Dr. Randles, but minus, excuse me, Dr. Randles.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I don't get to vote. Yes.
All right. Consent agenda minus the Cherry Street item passes eight zero.
Uh, Dr. Randles is recusing herself from this one, so do I have a motion to approve the, I wish I knew what you were referencing here. There's a Cherry Street.
Uh, yeah, from the health centers. And then there's a funding, approval for the funding.
Do I have a motion to approve the grant funding for the Cherry Street Health Center?
So move.
On support for that?
Support.
Any discussion? Call the vote.
Uh, who made the motion? I apologize.
I did.
And the support was whom?
Reverend Matthias.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Dr. Randles recused. Mr. O'Connor, our president. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
President Faul?
Yes.
That passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We have no discussion items, so we are at the public comment portion of the agenda.
Uh, we have three public comments. Andrew Elvesteffer, excuse me if I mispronounced that, and, and I can't read this one, Swisher, I believe it is, and Paul Helder. If you can make your way down. Mr. Elvesteffer, Ms. Swisher, and Mr. Helder.
What's that?
Swisher is not an agenda item.
Yes, ma'am. It's that, that time of evening.
We are there.
So, yeah. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Step up, sir.
Yeah, have a seat, please. Have a seat, please.
Is a mic?
So, yeah. You have three minutes, and we can give you a one-minute warning. Would you like that?
No, because I speak fast.
Okay.
And if you don't believe me, you can ask Rick or Leanne.
All right.
They'll tell you. I wanted to introduce myself tonight as the newest Sibley Elementary Principal, and I wanted to invite each of you into our building to see what Sibley is offering for the Grand Rapids Public School District. I have had the pleasure to already meet Mr. Pastor Moody tonight, and Superintendent Neal and I have already met as well at the parent kickoff for GRPS University. But I wanted to say, I'm loving working in the Grand Rapids school system. I have a great building and a great staff, and I would like to see each of your faces at some point in this year into the building, so our students can give you a tour of the building and talk to you about some of the wonderful programs that we're doing at Sibley.
Great.
And that is my comment for tonight. And please call me Andrew. The last name is Elvesteffer, but I like to go by my first name, so the kids will call me Mr. A. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Uh, Ms. Swisher?
Welcome. Would you like a one-minute warning, or?
Sure.
Okay.
It won't last that long. My name's Ann Swisher. I am a Grayson member, and I work at Kent Transition Center at Mayfield. I just want to say there's a lot of good things going on in Grand Rapids Public Schools, and I'm excited about that. I just want to bring a point up of, I'm questioning something that's been told us that we have to comply with as Grayson members, employment training specialists, the kind of people who work in places like Kent Transition Center. We have been told that they're going to take away our desks, and I don't really know why. Our desks, where we sit. I can understand, maybe there's some people who sit at their desks too much or something. I don't know. I don't experience that in the building that I'm in, but I would really prefer not to have my desk taken away, because there's a lot of reasons. I do students' timesheets. My other childcare worker in the room is doing student store and doing the books for that. And, you know, we use our desks, and I don't believe, we overuse our desks. So if this comes to your table and it's discussed, I just would like to say that, especially because we work with young adults, it is very important to establish a relationship that is separate from them. We are their mentors, their advisor, their teacher, and that little piece of real estate is ours, and they can't go and sit at our desk, they can't go through our drawer. It establishes a relationship, even if just in simul only, but I just hope that when this, if this comes up to you to look at, that you don't take away our desks, please. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Helder said case.
Hello, hello. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I will keep it relatively short, so that'll be nice for you. First off, I won't see probably most of you before then, so I'll wish you happy Thanksgiving in advance. So you are aware, we had a meeting today, and by we, I mean myself, Mickey Savage, Sharon Pitts, and Eric Harmson regarding evaluations. Apparently, there are a couple of, or one really substantial change to the policy coming forward, which I think is a big step in the right direction. And I want to let you know, too, that we're planning to meet in another month to go through collaboratively, which, which this will be our first time being involved in the evaluation process, at least to give some notes and to, you know, talk a little bit about what might constitute additional accomplishments. The more we can lay those things out in advance, that people can see, you know, in a concrete fashion what those are, the more transparent and open the process will be. I'm not going to talk a great deal about the process. Grand Rapids Press has already indicated that they wanted to do a story on it. Sharon and I have talked about that already, because she's been contacted as well, and I don't want to steal any of their work either. So, you know, those who are interested at home should probably read that article, whatever it is, whenever it comes out. That's about it. Thank you very much, and believe it or not, I'm done.
Any final comments?
No comment.
Mr. Ross, how about you?
Um, I'm just nosy. The student group, who do we have here?
Yeah, they have us.
Yeah.
Curious too. Who's the student?
What class is this? Journalism class? Oh, there's a journalist back there.
She's the one writing the story.
There's your hand, Monica. It's journalism class.
Grand Valley State University College of Education.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Sure, if you have any questions, direct them to those two. No, I don't have any comment. Just excited about the Turkey Trot, maybe getting out there and doing a little volunteering, watch Blaze and Tony do his thing, I guess. If he kicks it off.
Boy, what if I show up and sing? It's.
Oh, my God. If you show up, they're going to give you the money. I do have to fix dinner.
But no, no, no comment. Thank you.
Dr. Baker? Blaze and Tony?
I like that, you know. So I'll go with that. So I would like to encourage, you know, last year, when it was downtown, it was nice, because I have run it the last several years since I got on the board, and when it was downtown, it really was a great celebration of Grand Rapids, having the Turkey Trot downtown and having, you know, everything kind of being in a good place for Grand Rapids Public Schools. And so it still feels that way, so I would really encourage people to come down and celebrate being part of Grand Rapids, you know, next Thursday morning. So, or, you know what I mean? It's on the 28th, and let's have fun, so. I have nothing else. It's good to know that our union president has spoken two meetings in a row now, telling us that things are going well, so. So I guess things are going well, so.
Pastor Moody?
Yes, I want to give kudos to the superintendent and to her staff. In the Academic Achievement Meeting we had last Tuesday, the data that they gave in reference to how the kids were doing is overwhelming. And to see the principals and those teachers involved, and really getting down to the real nitty-gritty in terms of teaching those kids, it's very important. Over the past week, we had a conference with Dr. Tony Evans, who also brought some staggering data as well, in reference to what's taking place across the country. Then listening to Dr. Ferguson on Saturday at our church for breakfast, who also brought the data. So the data seems to be in cohesiveness with Grand Rapids Public Schools. So you guys are on the ball. The only thing now that's left to do is to get some measurements and some outcomes and see it happen. I'm very concerned with the report reading and math, and there's a lot that needs to be done. And I think there's a lot of people out in the community who are eager and ready to roll to help GRPS.
Thank you. Reverend Matthias?
Yeah, I did want to comment. I agree, this weekend, we had a gathering of clergy that are looking at, from that aspect, how to help our public schools. And I agree, I think the community as a whole is ready to engage. What's exciting is to see the position that the school district has put itself with the school improvement plans and what it's doing, and now it can actually say, you know, how can we help? And that's good, to see that capacity being built. I think Dr. Ferguson really gave us some data across the board, and also challenging the civic community to engage. Again, it just seems like. Again, it just seems like all the, all the pieces are together so that, as a whole, I think we're gonna see tremendous changes, you know, in, in, in our community, particularly among our minority youth who are such at risk, but yes, have such potential. So absolutely, there's some, there's some really exciting things that certainly you have done to bring those folks to the table, so that's exciting. Thank you.
Mr. Legrand?
Yeah, the one thing that I got a little behind the curve on was the purchasing agenda, and I figured I could just comment on it, but I wanted to give credit where credit was due there. I had a little, the one thing that was on the purchasing agenda that was of interest to me was the solar project at Blandford, and I saw that there was a fifty-thousand-dollar grant involved there, and it's essentially about a fifty-thousand-dollar project. And so I was concerned that we were getting good value, and I've been, the folks in our facilities have managed to come up, have actually managed to come up with a seventeen-kilowatt program, fifteen. So a good, a good product there, and specifically, and for all you geeks out there watching this on television, this is coming in at about three dollars and thirty cents a watt, which is good. There's no way to drive this below about two fifty a watt at this point, but the solar market is full of people who are willing to charge you way more than they should for a product, and we got a great value here. So this is not an inflated price for what we got, it's a very, very good price. So not only are we gonna be getting a lot of solar energy there, and that's about three households worth of offset, roughly, just so everyone knows, we're getting it at a good price, and I'm just glad, very glad to see that. So congratulations, thanks for being our financial watchdog on that.
Dr. Randles?
Sorry for being late. My, not only was my electricity out earlier, my cable phone and TV went down on Saturday, so the cable guy who didn't fix it, so they're coming again. Anyway, so my apologies, and everyone else who doesn't have power, stay warm, find some friends, don't try and stay at home, it's too cold.
That's right.
Or install some solar panels.
Well, and they don't really work in the evening, right?
Well, no, but if you got a bad phone.
And, and thank you for all the people who are working so hard to get the electricity back online.
That's right.
That's a tremendous weather scenarios they've been dealing with, that's.
I can add to that, I spent a lot of hours without heat and power, and, boy, you know, you don't realize how really important it is as the hours go by, and it gets colder and colder, so. Anyway, I have no other further comments.